All right. See how it goes. Uh, can I have a pencil? Yeah, we'll call the February fourth, two thousand twenty-five North Providence Town Council meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes, discussion and possible action and vote with regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes from the meeting of January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, seconded by Councilman Pollack. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes, the ayes have it. Item number two, CDBG. Mayor Lombardi requests discussion and possible vote on upcoming CDBG funding for two thousand twenty-five. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I thought I'd have a little more information for you this evening, but we won't be getting the final drafts until they tell us the eleventh. But most of the funding they're telling us at this point in time is going to be for housing. We will keep you informed before any applications are made so that this council will have the opportunity to weigh in on some or any requests for funding. As you know, in the past, basically, it's been Tri County, which used to be Tri-Town, Fogarty Center, and as a representative of Fogarty Center here this evening, and Saint Mary's Home. So we're just hoping that some of those funds that were maybe going towards Saint Mary's, we could retrieve and use for other purposes. And at this point in time, I will keep you informed. That's all I could tell you as of this point.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Does anybody have any questions for the mayor and councilman?
Mayor, do we know how much money we have with any of the grants that are remaining now on the CBD grants?
Oh, it's just the money, Steve, that was scheduled to go to Saint Mary's. And they're holding it up right now. And that was a considerable amount of money because at that time they were talking about some major renovations of the building. And again, as you know, that property is going to be sold.
Okay, so this is specific just to that, these right there. Okay.
And they're very, very, they're tough to deal with. They're very, very strict, by the way. So, but again, they're telling us that most of the monies will be for housing or apartments and structures. Because as you know, the new law and for the council people in industry too, that issue on Beard Avenue, talked to Stefano about it, went from eighteen units, by the way, to now forty-eight being allowed. So, just a little bit of an issue, councilman. But that's all I get to report tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any other questions? All right, thank you, Mayor. Step there. Number three, Smart Street Property. Mayor Lombardi requests discussion and possible vote concerning the sale of property on Smart Street, Platte Four, Lot five seventeen, that belongs to the town that a portion of a resident's house is built on. Mayor?
So, Mr. Chairman, if you're familiar with the area, the apartments that are on Woodward Road, they go all the way back to this property, which is on Smart Street in the back of our DPW garage up in the back. There was an issue at the complex there and it became a ingress, an egress, illegal, became a little dangerous, so we went in and blocked the road. When I say block the road, we went in and just blocked a lot line so that all of those apartments on Woodward Road couldn't come in and out through the neighborhood. People were very happy, by the way. But in our discovery, we found that there's a structure there that is built partly on the town property. And I can tell you a little history being around as long as I have. When those apartments were built, I want to say it was the late eighties. We had a disagreement there. This house that's there now was a garage. And it was a fellow that ran a construction company in town, very well associated. And at that point in time, was told that he could build this big garage up in the back there. And we're wondering, how's this happening? So we complained, it's on record, but it just never happened that we could stop it. Then over the years, it became a house. And that's what it is right now. That being the case, and the fella, I think someone's here to represent the property tonight, been very, very amenable. We went in, we sent the engineers in. So the bottom, bottom line with this council, that lot is thirty-five hundred thirty square feet. To put this to rest, such as we've done with a number of properties that we bought from Rialin Energy, people that abutted, and most of it's in this room too, by the way, with the agreement that there be no additional structure or building on the property, that we would sell the property for two dollars and fifty cents a square foot, we talked with Mr. Andolfo about that. So, that's eighty-eight hundred twenty-five dollars to legalize this structure on, which was two properties, but now will become one. Be easy for the assessor's office, the collector's office, so basically, that's what I'm here for tonight, is to allow us to enter into an agreement. Mr. Vest, by the way, and put this situation to bed, but it's going on for about thirty-seven, thirty-eight years.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on this property? Is there anyone here from this property? Mayor had mentioned there's someone here. Okay?
He said he thought he would.
That's okay.
Come in.
All right, you all have the information in front of you. Would there be no questions? Do I have a motion to approve? The sale of the property on Smart Street?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Martone. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famigetti. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I think you have a picture of both the properties, correct?
Yeah, I was trying to get it up there.
I asked Maria in the Senate here.
Man, and this is behind DPW, right?
So if you go by the front door to DPW, Ron, you make your first left, you'll head right into the house there. And the good thing is, it's been a little safer now because people can't cut through that street and get to Woodward Road anymore. Or vice versa.
Okay, item number four, revisions to previous ordinance. Mayor Lombardi requests discussion and possible vote on sending ordinance twenty-three dash zero thirty-five Z to the ordinance committee for possible amendment. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, that's exactly what I'm requesting that the ordinance committee address this. Let me tell you what happened getting back to Saint Mary's. They took out a building permit. As you know, they were going to build two new buildings in the back of that property. And our ordinance says that if they don't use the permit in a year, we have to reimburse expenses, so somewhere around fifty-two thousand dollars, by the way. But when we checked, I kind of thought it was a little long, late period. In most of the communities, and I wish that the ordinance committee checked us out, say, six months. So, just trying to be consistent with other communities, so when you get that, Steph, take a look at it, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, do I have a motion to send this to the ordinance committee?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, seconded by Councilman Pollack. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number five, zone change amendment. Town council to consider approval of an application from S. Alex Jackson to amend zoning ordinance and the zoning map of the town of North Providence to change lots one and eight twenty-one on the assessors' platte eight, Commercial Village, to a district demoted as Commercial Village, with special exceptions. This application was advertised in the Providence Journal on January tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and continued to this date. Do I have a motion to continue this matter to the March meeting?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famigetti. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number six, class BV liquor license. Notice was given of a public hearing to be held on this date in the Providence Journal on September thirteenth, twentieth, and two thousand twenty-four for a new class BV liquor license for S. Alex Jackson, DBA three sixty venue, fifteen twenty-five Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island, zero two nine one one. This meet, this item was continued from the October first, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Do I have a motion to continue this matter to the March meeting?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Laporteo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. All right, number seven, vicualling license. Town council to consider the approval of a vicualling license for S. Alex Jackson, DBA three sixty venue, fifteen twenty-five Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. This meeting, this item was continued from the October first, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Do I have a motion to continue this matter to the March meeting?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Pollack. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor? All those opposed, the ayes have it. And item number eight, entertainment licenses. Town council to consider the approval of two entertainment licenses for S. Alex Jackson, DBA three sixty venue, fifteen twenty-five Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island, DJ and other types of entertainment. This meeting was continued from October first, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Do I have a motion to continue this matter to the March meeting?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Pollack, seconded by Councilman Martone. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number nine, zone change amendment. Town council to consider approval of an application from VP Development LLC to amend the zoning ordinance and the zoning map, the town of North Providence, to change lot thirty-eight on assessors' platte twenty-three A, Commercial Professional, in R eight, single household, to, to a district denoted as Commercial General. This application was advertised in the Providence Journal on January tenth, seventeenth, and twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, for a hearing on this date. Just state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Council President and members of the council. Joseph Brennan, attorney on behalf of the applicant, VP Development. The application that you have before you, as the council president stated, is for a zone change. Currently, the property is used as a car wash, and the applicant's proposing to keep the same use. The, the issue that we have is that that car wash had predated any zoning ordinances since, since about nineteen thirty, when it was built. And we are located in the Commercial Professional and R eight zone. We have a kind of a split zone that goes through the middle of our lot. A car wash is not in allowed use in those zones. So what we're doing is the current car wash will be demolished in its entirety, and a new one will be built almost on the same footprint. It will be a little bit expanded, but it will be in the same spot that it is now with better facilities, of a much newer facility, one that will run much better and automated, it'll be, it'll look nicer because it'll be a brand new building. But in doing so, and going through the ordinances very closely with the city solicitor and Kelly Moore Salvatore, and with the planner, we learned that it would probably be best for us, rather than asking for use variances every, anytime there was a change, to just go through the planning process and also ask that this town council change the zone to the CG zone where our use is allowed by special use permit. Through the new laws that have been created, we have already gone before the planning board, which of course is necessary to get a recommendation before this town council. And there, we have already received that special use permit. So now we're just here before this council asking to approve that. I do have the engineer and the applicant here. If there's any questions that I can't answer.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Councilman?
Yeah, I didn't see the planning board recommendation. Did I just miss it? Was it a positive recommendation?
It was positive, yes.
So we, we held a special meeting on Thursday of last week. We weren't able to finalize the recommendation decision for this meeting, but get a unanimous approval for a positive recommendation to the town council and the planning board.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, one more question. So the only other thing that, and I don't do enough of this work, but is there any concern about spot zoning? Like, is that, is that an issue, or is that?
So across the street is Commercial General, so it wouldn't be considered spot zoning because it directly, you know, about, about, say, similar zones.
Okay.
And Brent, this doesn't have any effect on anything else in the town. If we grant this to something, it doesn't supersede something else, any of the projects we got going on?
This is just for lot thirty-eight.
And that's it. It's contained right through this.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from the audience on this matter? Any questions from the audience?
Uh, uh, sorry.
Just state your name for the record, please.
You know, talk about this car wash a few months back. Last year, I believe, the people in the apartments where they planned to build the car wash.
This is not the same one. It's not the same one. I got it, I got it. Not the same one.
Not the same one?
No, completely different. There's already a car wash where this one is. All right, thank you. All right, Councilman Martone, you had another question?
I had just one last question. Is it the same owners that are currently running the car wash that will be yes to making the improvements to this one? Okay.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the zone change amendment?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Laporteo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number ten. Dwan Gopanya LLC, DBA Green Basil Restaurant, summons was delivered to Richard W. Nicholson, Esquire Registered Agent of Dwan Gopanya LLC, DBA Green Basil Restaurant, located at twenty-eighty-six Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, for a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BV liquor license for this establishment and the failure to complete the requirements to renew said license, state tax, and payment for a license. Just state your name for the record, please.
Saying Dwan Gopanya.
Thank you very much. Where are you at with the state right now?
So the, all, all of the filings are up to date. The only remaining piece is the the corporate return, which my accountant has e-filed yesterday. Today, I have worked with the revenue officer and delivered copies of all the returns to him. I anticipate, we're going to pick this up in the morning. I anticipate that it will be cleared for, for COGS tomorrow.
Okay, I'm going to have the clerk check back with you in two weeks. Is that good? Do you think that's enough time?
Yes, it is, sir.
All right, does anybody have any questions on that? So we'll check back with you on February eighteenth.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion?
That we could continue it to the next meeting, or?
We'll continue it to the next, next meeting, to the March meeting, but we're going to have the clerk do a check on February eighteenth.
So moved.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Martone, seconded by Councilman Famigetti. Is there any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven eight seven Restaurant and Lounge, DBA seven eight seven Restaurant and Lounge, summons was delivered to Liz Vasquez, Registered Agent of seven eight seven Restaurant Lounge LLC, DBA seven eight seven Restaurant and Lounge, located at twelve seventy Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, for a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BV liquor license for this establishment and failure to complete the requirements to renew said license, state tax, signature page from entertainment, failure to make payments to the North Providence Police Department, but police details consent with the required conditions of your license and payment for license. I spoke with the police chief before the meeting, so we can remove. He and Liz have made an agreement that he is satisfied with, so we can remove that. Is there anything else?
We found out today that the certified food manager has expired within the last couple of months, too.
Okay, can you just come up to the microphone and state your name, please?
Good evening. Liz Vasquez?
Hi, Liz. Same thing as the last one. I'm going to give you two weeks to, you have to get a certified certified food manager.
He had expired though, within the last couple of months between December first, when we checked, and now it's expired.
Okay, no problem.
And how about the state taxes for you?
I already got the list and I'm working on it. That should be clear by, well, it should show up in your side probably like in two days because it takes a little bit for it to show up.
Okay, same thing as the last. I'm going to continue this to the March meeting, but have the clerk do a check on February eighteenth. It's in the form of a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, seconded by Councilman Pollack. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Item number twelve, JL and Bowery Investments LLC, DBA Dana's Sports Lounge. Summons was delivered to Amanda Thornley, Registered Agent of JL and Bowery Investments LLC, DBA Dana's Sports Lounge, located at fourteen ten R Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, for a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BV liquor license and entertainment licenses for this establishment and the failed, failure to complete the requirements to renew said licenses, state tax, certified food manager, and payment for license. State your name for the record, please.
Yes, good evening, Mr. President. Members of the council, John Maney, on behalf of the license holder. I'm here with Amanda Thornley as well.
Thank you.
Just by way of background, my client's establishment had a flood two weeks ago. He's closed for the moment, or for the time being, and the renovations are expected to take about four months. That's just by way of background. So right now, he's not operating at all. But with respect to the issue with the state taxes, the paperwork has been dropped off. They're, they're processing, processing it to give us a number, and my client will make the payments on that issue, so we can get the certificate a good standing for the town. And with regard to the certification from the state for the health department, the person that was there was going to renew in the last couple of weeks, but has not. And he hasn't at this moment because it's closed. Notwithstanding that, he plans on renewing, and we have an alternate person. Amanda is halfway through that process now as well. So I was going to respectfully request maybe a three-month status date. He is not operating, as I indicated, and that way, he'll get up and running. In the meantime, he'll be working on the taxes, the payment of them, the paperwork's done.
Mr. President, may I suggest?
Yeah, go ahead.
My suggestion would be we continue it out three months with, where the licensee is non-operational. However, he can certainly operate if he provides outstanding to our clerk. So if it gets done before three months and he's ready to go, it probably won't happen, but if it is, as long as our clerk is satisfied that those documents have been received, I don't, I don't want to hold, hold him up because we kick it out three months.
Okay, is that in form of a motion?
Motion, yeah.
Okay, a motion been made by Councilman Martone. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famigetti. Is there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm going to skip over to number fifteen because I believe Senate air revival is going to be late. Item number item number fifteen, Acorn LLC, DBA, the Acorn Room. Summons was delivered to Carl B. Lisa, Registered Agent of Acorn LLC, DBA, the Acorn Room, located at twenty-two oh nine Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, for a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BV liquor license and entertainment licenses for this establishment and the failure to complete the requirements to renew said licenses, state tax, signature page of entertainment, and payment for license. Just state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Carl Lisa Junior. I'm an attorney with law firm of Lisa Palaski and Anna Sures, three seventy George Washington Highway, Smithfield, Rhode Island, here on behalf of Acorn LLC and also Tumble Salts Cafe. Not sure if that's later on the agenda. Tumble Salt should be all set. Okay, so as far as Acorn goes, all of the paperwork has been filed. Everything should be in order. The fees have been paid to the town. The only thing we're waiting on now is a good standing certificate for the, from the Division of Taxation. I've been told that the paperwork has been filed for it, and we're just waiting for the Division of Taxation to issue the good standing. So I would ask for a continuance till next month, till we can get that, or if I get it sooner, I will bring it to the town clerk's office.
Okay, same thing. I'm going to continue this to the March meeting, but have the clerk do a check on the eighteenth of February.
All right, that's fine.
So moved.
Motion been made by Motion been made by Councilman Famagetti, seconded by Councilman Laporte. Any questions? There be none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number fifteen, SR Management Group LLC DBA Centennial Revival summons was delivered to Shane Pichay, Registered Agent of SR Management Group LLC DBA Centennial Revival located at twenty thirty-one Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island for a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BV liquor and entertainment licenses for this establishment and the failure to complete the requirements to renew said licenses, state tax, town tax and payment for license. Same thing, I'm gonna ask that this continue to the March meeting with a checkup on February eighteenth from the town clerk.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Laporte. Any questions? There be none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. And item number fourteen, SR Management Group LLC DBA Stella Suites. Summons was delivered to Shane Pichay, Registered Agent of SR Management Group LLC DBA Stella Stella Suites located at two thousand nine Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island for a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BV liquor and entertainment licenses for this establishment and the failure to complete the requirements to renew said licenses. State tax, certified food management and payment for license. Do I have a motion to continue this to the March meeting? With a February eighteenth check-in from our clerk. Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala. Excuse me, seconded by Councilman Laporte. Any questions? There be none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Excuse me, one second. Okay, proposed ordinances. Notice was given of a public hearing on this day whereby the town council would consider passage of the following proposed ordinances. Wanna make a motion to dispose?
Yeah, I'll make a a motion to dispense with the reading.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Famagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martin. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number sixteen, ordinance twenty five dash zero zero one Z, an ordinance amending the Town of North Providence zoning ordinance concerning banquet facilities. Do I have a motion to continue this matter to the March meeting?
I'll make the motion, uh, Mr. President, to continue. Um, I know that we asked our uh, planning director to be here as well as the attorney for the zoning board uh, and planning board, which I assume this was drafted from. Um, I see our planning director here. I don't see the attorney here, so I'd renew that request that at the next meeting they come, so we can discuss the um, the the language in this ordinance.
Um,
Can we just have Brent come up to?
Yeah, while he's here. Brent, come up for a second, please. Actually, a motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Pollock. Brent?
Yeah, so my my question is, I know that that um, a few months ago with some of the state legislation changes, there was some stuff that we had to do because if we didn't, people would be able to do certain things by right, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Is this one of those things?
So this is the um, sorry, this is for?
This is the banquet facility.
The banquet facility. This is one of the things that would affect every zone, that CV, so Centennial and pretty much all down Charles Street.
Well, my my question is, if if we don't approve this and someone tries to put a banquet facility in, because as of right now, my understanding is there is no use code for banquet facility, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so like, uh, let's allow this is essentially uh, non-classified use, so.
So if someone came in right tomorrow and said, I wanna do a banquet facility?
They would have to go through this process.
There is no definition. Can they do it or can they not do it somewhere?
So essentially, if it's one hundred percent banquet facility, no. But if it's a restaurant primarily with an accessory banquet, you know, event room?
Yep.
Um, it would be allowed under as a restaurant.
But by us holding off on this a month, it's not gonna, it's not gonna impact us.
No, most likely not.
Okay.
You just made a point. It's gonna have a restaurant attached to a banquet. It just can't be an open, can't just be an open dance hall banquet facility.
But what do you know, what do you know, it's a banquet facility from a?
So we don't, yeah, nightclub.
Yeah.
We don't have a definition, but a bank facility, I would say is um, you know, one hundred percent of the space is event space, so they're only holding functions. They're not, you know, having regular dining hours where guests taper in, taper out.
No, but this one, so does it have to have a a kitchen, a kitchen? Standing there or can I have a caterer come in and say, well, I got food now. It's it's not a banquet facility.
So I would say both. Yeah.
It has to have a kitchen in order to be the?
I would say both, cause there's there's places that don't have kitchens that bring in, you know, caterers. Like weddings and things like that.
But that's that's officially a banquet facility.
There really is no official definition.
You have to categorize this one.
The way I'm categorizing it is if fifty percent of the floor area is restaurant, then it's a restaurant. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure us holding off on it. It would be like a loophole. Hey, we're gonna do a restaurant now. We're gonna, and then at night, it's gonna become a banquet facility.
In a way, yes.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to continue this. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Ordinance seventeen, I mean, item number seventeen, ordinance twenty five dash zero zero two Z.
Brent, might as well stay.
In an ordinance amending the Town of North Providence zoning ordinance and zoning map regarding plat twenty three A, lot thirty eight. Is there any questions on ordinance twenty five dash zero zero two Z?
Take a motion to dispense with the reading of the ordinance.
Okay, a motion been made by Councilman Famagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martin. Any questions? All those in favor? All those opposed, the ayes have it. Any questions on item number seventeen?
This is just the companion to what we did.
Yes, yeah, the the car wash, okay.
Yeah, that's the verbiage.
All right, wanna make sure.
Okay, do I have a motion to pass ordinance twenty five dash zero zero two Z? Motion's been made by Councilman Laporte. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martin. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thanks, Brent.
Good, Brent.
Item number eighteen, victualling license. Town council to consider the approval of a victualling license for Papa Papa
John's.
ERDR, North Providence, DBA Papa John's Pizza, fifteen ninety-nine Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence. Is there anyone here from Papa John's Pizza? Just come to the microphone, please. State your name for the record.
Good evening, Council. My name's Gabriel Beltrier.
Thank you. Uh, when do you plan on opening?
Tomorrow, if I'm available, if it's possible.
Okay, very good. All right, is anybody, any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the victualling?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, so it's it's uh, what's the plan for, I assume you're doing delivery, right?
Yes.
Uh, do you know how many delivery drivers you're gonna have? What what's the plan is for them?
So we're still technically in the hiring stage, but so far we have two to three drivers that are ready to go whenever we're open. We still kind of retain a lot of the employees that we hired previously. And they're just waiting to get the okay, so we can open up.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody have any questions?
You really use better ingredients.
Okay, come up to the microphone. Just have a seat, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President and honorable members, and special welcome to Councilor Pollock. Welcome aboard. Um, I just have a couple of questions. The hours on the?
Can you just uh, state your name for the record, Everett? Sorry about that. Just state your name.
Oh, Everett Lamonton.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No, anytime.
Um,
Cause it's jumped around a few times on the website, cause they were open, they were open real briefly and then?
The hours that they have listed is ten AM to one AM. Is that accurate, sir?
The website has two AM Friday, Saturday. So is that, is it gonna be?
No, we don't have, we don't have a two AM in the town.
Well, that's what's on the web. I'm just telling you what's on the website. It's ten AM to two AM Friday and Saturday. Uh, ten AM, one AM, the rest of the week.
All right, yeah, yeah.
So Sunday through Thursday, our hours would be from ten AM to one AM, Fridays and Saturdays from ten AM to two.
No, you have to close at one. We don't have two AM.
Uh, we were sure about what the, I wasn't at least sure what the town requested or times. I mean, Taco Bell, the motors open till three, so.
You'd have to come in sep-
We'll make the change.
You'd have to come in separately for an extended hours in, we they're very, we very rarely grant them that Taco Bell's been there for well before all of us. But um, we have a one o'clock curfew in the town, so.
We can always change the hours at the time.
Thank you. Um, you might, you you know what? Have a seat in that first seat, just in case you have more questions.
I just have a question about the the dumpster situation. It's um, it's, I believe it's his dumpster. It's not in a corral. It's just in the open parking lot. I didn't complain tonight. I didn't call Brent or anybody. I just, cause I know they had ceased operations and I would just want to find out if that was later going to be put into the corral. Is that your dumpster?
Well, our understanding, yes, that is our dumpster. The landlord is supposed to provide a corral for us. I know one of the other businesses next to us is not open. So I myself was actually not aware. I know ours is to the far right in the rear of the building on one of parking spaces. Whether he's gonna cover that up, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Now we'll have to get an answer from you once I speak to the landlord and my bosses about it.
Okay. Any other questions?
And I just ask that he be respectful and honor the um, the basic noise ordinance. Um, last night you had a delivery at ten PM. They came in, they come in the rear. I live on the back street, so when that truck comes in with the reefer running, it sounds like a freight train's coming through my house. So I'm just being honest with you, you know what I mean? So noise ordinance, this is from ten PM to seven AM, and I just ask that you respect the neighbors for that.
No, definitely. I mean, right now with the new open of this restaurant, the routes that we have specific times, they're supposed to be there five, seven o'clock at night, but the drivers are, they're new drivers, so they're new to the route. Location is new to the route, so they're still trying to figure out what is the best time to come in and make those deliveries. They usually run three, four, five o'clock in the afternoon because they work their way up to Boston and then come back to Rhode Island so they can head back to New Jersey. They usually go to Far River first, then North Providence, then back up to Pataque and then to Warwick. But they're still trying to figure out the routes.
As long as it's before ten o'clock, you're good.
No, I no, I appreciate it. I'm just for the um, just to make this easier for everybody. I just, you know, wanna make sure that we're all on the same page. I'm not trying to be, I hope you make a bazillion dollars over there in my mind. I'm I'm not just trying to be, but but I just, you know, just respect it, cause we're right on that back street. And there's kids next door to me that is a couple of them under the age of five, so everyone's kind of sleeping. They go to bed early, so.
Which is understandable. Usually, uh, we, the drivers go through the front door, but because parking is very tight in the front of the store, they have to go around the back. So if all the other businesses are closed down and they have enough room, they are willing to go to the front because if before, after, I'm sorry.
Just be cognizant of the fact that, you know, there are neighbors back there, you know, um, they're good neighbors in the town. They wanna see that Plaza succeed. They've they've always supported everything that's going on over there. Just, you know, every once in a while, we gotta tighten up some things, whether it's delivery times, drivers, just keep an eye on that for us. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Good luck. Item number nineteen, victualling license. Town council to consider the approval of a victualling license for Kimberly Ramirez, DBA California Taco Taco Shop, nine eighty-one Mineral Spring Avenue is Ramirez here.
Hi, yes, good evening.
Hi, thank you. Just state your name for the record, please.
Uh, Kimberly Ramirez.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Um, yeah, I have a few. So um, I know the business that was there previous, they ended up putting their dumpster kind of on the side street where the houses are on Beard Avenue. Is there any way that you could keep the dumpster off of that street, either in the back of the building or or anything like that that you could do?
So we rented out one of the garages next door, so it's in there.
Oh, excellent.
Without the way.
Okay, um, yeah, as long as there's nothing on the side of that and it's off, you know, either in the garage or in the back of the building, whatever the case might be. Um, uh, with those conditions, I would make a motion to approve the license.
I understand.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Laporte. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys. Have a good night.
Good luck. Thank you. Item number twenty, laundry license. Town council to cons- to consider a vote for the approval of a laundry license for Dirty Laundry, ten ninety-nine Charles Street. Just state your name for the record, please.
Matt Demato.
Thank you, Matt. Does anybody have any questions? You have the information in front of you, councilman?
What are the hours of operation?
Eight in the morning to eight at night.
Motion to approve.
Okay, a motion been made by Councilman Famagetti, seconded by Councilman Pollock. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Good luck. Thank you.
Good luck. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Item number twenty one, class F one liquor license. Town council to consider a vote for the approval of a class F one liquor license for Behind the Bars Mixology LLC for an event at Camp Meon on June sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Just state your name for the record.
Jeremy Messenger.
Thank you. Okay, he's been here. Never had a problem. Motion to approve by Councilman Bacala. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famagetti. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Good work.
Item number twenty two, entertainment license check. Town council requests discussion and possible vote on application of entertainment and DJ entertainment licenses for the back lot following the probationary period. Just state your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Cody Fraser.
Thank you.
Melanie Dupont.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I have not received any complaints. Have you started entertainment?
Yeah, uh, we've had four events already.
Oh, good, good. Everything going well?
Yeah, as well as it can be.
Good, good. Is there any questions?
No, we haven't got anything from the neighbors, police, nothing, right?
We got a packet of of uh, information, but as first, best I could tell, none of the stuff has anything to do with it.
Yeah, I read through it. Most of it is just, there was just one uh, somebody car stolen or something or broken into in the lot.
Did you have something on New Year's Eve?
No.
No.
Okay, so that was the only one that I had questioned about?
Yeah, right.
It wasn't you, so.
Yeah.
All right. So is there a motion to approve a full uh, entertainment license?
So moved. Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Laporte, seconded by Councilman Martin. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Good luck. Thank you for coming in. Item number twenty three, budget, business registrations licenses. Compliance Officer Ron Georgiou requests discussion and possible vote regarding an ordinance for business registration licenses. He um, called me and I didn't have a chance to call him back.
We we basically just wanna move this to uh, March ordinance, so I'll make a motion to send it to ordinance.
Okay, motion been made by Councilman Bacala. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Pollock. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty four, Our Lady of Fatima Hospital. Councilman Martin requests discussion, possible vote on the sale of Our Lady of Fatima Hospital. Councilman?
Um, the the last I had heard was um, the bankruptcy court was considering whether they were gonna approve or allow the sale to still go through. We we have a document in front of us, although I'm not sure what it what exactly it means. It doesn't look like it's uh.
Yeah, it came in today, so I made sure I looked at it.
Yeah, thank you. Um, but it looks like uh, the sales transaction they're talking about is something in Delaware, so I don't think it pertains to us, but um, yeah, so tha- thank you, but yeah, I I'm not sure. So I guess uh, I I would just ask we continue this to the next uh, meeting and um, and ask the mayor to provide us with an update.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Martin to consider, to continue this to the March meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famagetti. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty five, grant committee formation. Councilman Laporte requests discussion and possible vote on the solidifying a grant committee for immediate formation. Councilman?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, we we uh, last year kind of formed a committee, uh, so to speak, and we've really not never met on something uh, to move forward and and um, my opinion, I think that we have grant money that we need to keep our eyes on so that they do not expire. The CBD uh, the CBD money is uh, we're entitled to apply for about five hundred thousand dollars a year. And I think that if we don't do this and we don't look at every single dollar that we can use, especially where the economy is now. Uh, I I think we should have a committee work with the administration a little more closely so that we can have some kind of a uh, an idea of how much money we have, when it's expiring. Uh, even meet with the grant writers periodically on this.
Okay, thank you. So any questions for Councilman Laporte on this?
I know, just to comment, the only thing I'll say is that the ordinance that we passed uh, allows for the formation of a grant committee that is, it is a subcommittee of the finance committee. So I would think that um.
Can we talk about that? Cause I'm not a hundred percent sure what that means.
Well, I mean, basically what I think what it would mean is that either members of the finance committee would have separate meetings for the grant, in particular about grants.
So what what I think we could do, Steve, if you want, is rather than have to rewrite the ordinance, we can make it a subcommittee and if you wanna just play in the meetings, we can have, you know, we can, we just do, be you and Steve and obviously anybody else that wants to come. Let me know when you wanna have them and you can, you know, have them whenever you want. you could, you know, whatever you want.
Yeah, but
If you want to just lead the charge on planning them and
Okay, agree.
I just have this question, if it's the same people on the finance committee that's on the grant committee, that just can't be a line item on the finance
I guess, but I think it actually, it because it's a subcommittee, I think it actually makes sense, like we we, it could be a finance committee meeting, but it's really a meeting of the the grant committee, that way we keep it separate, so things don't get commingled, then we can focus on grants for for that specific meeting.
Yeah, I like that idea.
I like some uh, direction on how we uh, can keep on top of this all the time, you know, and and, you know, monitor this so that the administration works with us on this. Uh, have an open door with policy on this thing, so we we know exactly what's coming in.
I mean, technically, you could treat it like a like a committee and have monthly committee hearings on it, so there's an updated uh, like it, whether it's a ledger from finance on and what has gone out and what we're, you know, what's pending and then we can have these discussions in it.
We formally form this committee, subcommittee and vote on the members of it, or how how do you want to work?
I would, so the subcommittee, it's gonna be as as uh, you and Steve, okay.
What I would suggest is that at your next finance committee meeting, you put a grant committee on the agenda, you can nominate or vote on a chairperson and that chairperson will lead the charge in setting up meetings and coordinating with the administration.
Perfect.
Perfect, yeah, it'll be the same three guys and then, you know, you can coordinate with them when you want to have your separate grant meetings.
That works.
Absolutely.
Okay.
But I do like the idea of keeping it separate, because you could dedicate a whole meeting to to just that.
Yeah.
So, a motion's been made by Councilman La Portio, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-six, resignation letters, receive letters of resignation to be accepted with regret from the following, Christopher Patraca from the zoning board and Rebecca Schnell from the library board, do I have a motion to accept these with regret?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-seven, board appointments, town council discussion action with regard to the appointments to be made to the following boards. Reappointments, A, zoning board at Debbie Gonzalez Cabala, B, environmental commission, Colin Miller and Roderick De Silver, C, juvenile hearing, hearing board, Giselle Polanco, D, land trust, Kenneth Conti District Two and Marilyn Walaska District Three and Daniel Connor is the alter- alternate. Do I have a motion, and a new appointment, public libraries, Paul Bachinger.
Motion approved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Pollock to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famigetti, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-eight, town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the claims received from the following, Alyssa Pansioko, Seven Timber Street, North Providence, Rhode Island, zero two nine zero four, Carla Fernandez, one ninety-one High Service Avenue, apartment two, North Providence, Rhode Island, zero two nine zero four, and Deanna Lisi, Four Puritan Street, North Providence, Rhode Island, zero two nine zero four, do I have a motion to refer these to the claims committee?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, is there a second, seconded by Councilman La Portio, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-nine. Item number twenty-nine, claims committee report, town council discussion action with regard to the claims committee report to be presented by Councilman Bacala, councilman?
Thank you, uh, claims committee met this evening right before our meeting, there was two items on the agenda, we moved them to the March meeting, so we're gonna meet with the February, because there was only two and we just need information on one, so we'll meet this month and it'll all be on the March uh, report, so there's nothing to report, so please accept my non-report in the form of a motion.
Motion made.
Motion been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number thirty, ordinance committee report, town council discussion in action with regard to the ordinance committee report to be presented by Councilman Famigetti. Ordinance committee met last night, uh, we had about twelve items on the agenda. A few things that are coming out of the committee that we uh, need to discuss is the first, the fire system ordinance, we had that in front of us um, a couple of months back, that's to um, uh, require updates to the master boxes, to uh, radio boxes. Again, as we discussed, it would give a five-year period for these um, uh, property owners to comply. Um, we did add one sentence to the ordinance that would uh, uh, you can see it in the report, but essentially it would allow diversion of monies from the restricted account for the um, uh, annual fees to be used for expenses within the communications department, uh, subject to the majority approval of the town council. Uh, the committee has recommended passage of the ordinance, so I'd like to entertain a motion that we uh, introduce said ordinance at the next council meeting.
So moved, second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Pollock, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. We also discussed um, our background check procedure for liquor license applications and um, we were looking for a more comprehensive review. The process that we have is through BCI, uh, which is, has a five-dollar charge. Uh, we collectively came up with the idea that the uh, police department can conduct a fi- a a far more uh, comprehensive review of the licensed applicants. So uh, we are recommending passage of an ordinance that would require liquor license applicants to undergo a background check with the North Providence Police Department um, for a fee of five, five dollars, and the recommendation was subject to the police chief's chief's um, approval, which he verbally gave me today, so I'd like to entertain a motion that we introduce such an ordinance at the next meeting.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Pollock, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. We also addressed um, uh, a resident-only parking on sixteen Redfern Street, I'd like to entertain a motion um, to uh, uh, introduce an ordinance for resident-only parking in front of sixteen Redfern Street at the next council meeting.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman La Portio, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, and I'd like to uh, entertain a motion to accept the report as submitted.
So moved, second.
Motion maybe made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Pollock, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number thirty-one, finance committee report, town council discussion in action with regard to the finance committee report to be presented by Councilman Martin, councilman?
Thank you, thank you, yes, I I, so I uh, sent it in the finance committee report, but in fairness to our wonderful clerks, I sent it in way too late, to print it, so uh, but the, but the gist of it is that uh, there were two items on that we passed off of our uh, off of our finance committee agendas, one was the emergency disaster relief fund, if we need to bring that back up, we will.
That's fine.
The second one was the Greystone Bridge, at this point, I think we've done everything we can do, there's no point in beating a dead horse. What's gonna happen is gonna happen, it's in other people's hands. Uh, we continued uh, the remainder of the items on the agenda except for uh, the consideration of the judge salaries. Uh, our discussion and and um, and our conclusion with regard to the judge salaries were that we do think they should be increased. The judges are uh, meeting more and they're also bringing in a significant amount of revenue to the town. Our recommendation based on a review of what some other cities and towns are doing, would be a a salary of eighteen thousand dollars for the chief judge and fourteen thousand dollars for the uh, associate judge. I think the only question, the only thing that we really need to discuss and figure out uh, is is this something that we want to try and get done now? In which we would need, I think, an ordinance to amend last year's budget ordinance? Or if this is something we want to wait and just take up in our next budget session?
No, I wouldn't wait. I I would make him
I I mean, I I'm
Pushing not to wait and move it to
I'm fine with that, I I think, but I I guess we just need to we've done that before, Mary Ann, right, where we've made an amendment?
A change, whatever the department they're in.
Yep.
You'd have to change that to amend the budget ordinance. I'm not sure who they fall under. Uh, legal, maybe, I'm not sure.
So I guess I would make a motion to have our legal counsel and our clerk potentially work together to figure out how to make, uh, well, by the way, if everybody's okay with it, how to make the new salaries a reality as soon as possible.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Martin, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Anything further for finance?
That was it, that was all the agenda.
Okay.
You didn't have any debates?
No, we didn't have any debates on that. Uh, we can add them on if we miss them. Yeah.
That's the end of the agenda, I do see two people in the audience back there, um, was there anything that you missed? You two young, young ladies?
No, they're from the, they're from the Johnston town.
The what?
They're from the town of Johnston.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn is made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, we're adjourned.
That's